Let me everyone join. Well, the meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a virtual planning and zoning meeting hosted by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter this new meeting, you will be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so you can be seen by others when, if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said about the commission members, even if you are muted and or your camera is not on. There will be an opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time, public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary um will read the call of the meeting as published according to government's executive order. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application. Explain to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.gilfordct.gov, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application, if there are any, and there will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand through the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. As this public hearing must be recorded, it's necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. Seven, after all clarifying questions are exhausted, those who wish to speak in support of the application will be asked to come forward, state their name and address for the record, and make a statement. Then those who wish to speak in opposition to the application will be asked to go forward, state their name and address for the record, and make a statement. Eight, the applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Nine, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. And decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department at two zero three four five three eight zero three nine, or by emailing planning.zoning@gilfordct.gov after nine AM. Eleven, all actions taken, applications tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. See this evening of the following members, who will please identify themselves. Kevin Clark.
Here.
Bill Freeman.
Here.
Uh Ted Sands. Uh let's see, no. Philip Johnson.
Here.
Sean Cosgrove.
Here.
Uh Frank DeAndrea.
Here.
And I'm Scott, I'm in chair. Alternates present tonight are Jason Margie.
Here.
And Larry Rizzolo.
Here.
Um, I think Jason was the active member last time, so we'll go with Larry Rizzolo today is our active member.
Fine.
Us, staff present are Jamie Stein, town planner. Uh Mills, assistant town planner, uh is not here, and I gotta update this. Uh Janique is our executive assistant. Um, this meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read legal notice.
Uh, okay, notice here, hereby given that the Gilbert Planning and Zoning Commission hold a virtual public hearing on February fifteenth, three at seven thirty PM via the Zoom platform. Please use the following link. Attendees are advised not to go to the regular community center location because a physical meeting will not take place. The following applications will be heard. JP Morgan Chase applicant, Shoreline Plaza LLC, property owner. Eight thirty, Boston Post Road, map forty-seven, lot twenty-two B, zone SC. Special permit application for a freestanding bank within Shoreline Plaza. Realty Partners LLC, Eden Industries LLC, three fifty-one Woodfield Street, map twenty-eight, lot twelve. Zone V slash MR one. Special permit coastal site plan to address an existing cease and desist order issued June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two for a deposition of material within the coastal boundary without a coastal site plan or special permit. Town of Guilford, Jacobs Beach, one forty Seaside Avenue, map twenty-four, lot zero zero six. Zone R three coastal site plan application for two kayak racks at Jacobs Beach. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the planning and zoning office on the town's website. At this hearing, persons may attend via web connection and shall be heard. All written correspondence shall be submitted to planning.zoning@gilford.gov twenty-four hours prior to the meeting day. Documents are available at the planning and zoning office dial two zero three four five three eight zero three nine. For assistance dated at Guilford, Connecticut, this twenty-fourth day of January twenty twenty-three, Scott Edman, chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Um, so I hear a motion to open the public hearing.
Come over.
Thank you, Philip. I'll give Sean the second on favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Can I make a motion to move the kayak rack to the first item on the agenda?
Uh, you sure can, do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Sean again, uh all in favor.
Hi.
Uh, sorry, Rick, you're muted.
All right, first item on the agenda tonight, uh town of Guilford, Jacobs Beach, one forty Seaside Avenue, map twenty-four, lot zero zero six. Zone R three coastal site plan application for two kayak racks at Jacobs Beach.
Oh, thank you all, I'm gonna introduce it, uh but Ryan Greiner, who's the Eagle Scout doing the project, I think it'll be really his presentation. Uh, but just to let you know the need, we've got, um, I believe about two hundred and fifty slots right now for kayak and canoe racks uh down there, and um he'll be building two more uh racks which would accommodate thirty kayaks. We actually have thirty-three on a waiting list, so it'll pretty much accommodate everybody that we've got on our current waitlist. Um, this was approved by the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, we had the uh uh, that that part of Jacobs Beach we had surveyed because we wanted to be sure the existing racks that are on the east easternmost portion of the park property kind of along the marsh there. We want to be sure that was uh well within boundaries of of the park, and it is. Uh, it's getting, it's a little close, one edge of it is, uh, you know, maybe five feet from the body, but but it's it's clearly not stretching over to the prior property. So, um, the surveyor staked it out, uh, so we know exactly where that property is as we go north, which uh the 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 extension of the kayak racks would go north. Uh, so we're aware of the property line there, so we should we stay well within that. Um, and it's good we had that done, uh, because it's kind of a not quite a straight line, so it's good that we we now know exactly where that is, and we can be sure that when Ryan builds it, we're, you know, well within our our boundaries there. Um, so if Ryan is um is on board here, uh, it really should be his presentation of how he's planning on building it. So, um, is Ryan on?
Uh, let's see.
I don't see a Ryan, Rick. Uh, if you'd like, I can, I can show the survey and we could, we could walk through the.
Talk through it, um, okay. I mean, I can do it, but you know, it's kind of an Eagle project, and it's, you know, normally they're, they're a thing, but I I can certainly do it.
He's probably doing his homework.
Yeah. Um, is we gonna make that a little bigger, Jamie, or or not? I mean, I'm looking at it, but well, so.
You mean to see the full extent of Jacob's Beach or to zoom in on the racks?
Zoom in a little bit.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. I think.
So maybe, yeah, there we go. Um, okay, so you see, uh, the the gray area, that's the existing kayak rack. Uh, the boundary line is there, um, so the plan is to um, the two orange ones would be the the extensions. I was out there today, and I'm I'm thinking that the uh that first orange one is sort of attached to the existing kayak rack, that the plan that we originally talked about with Ryan is that you could probably use the two existing posts there, uh, save a little money, uh, and tie it to to the one that's already there. Um, I think it's gonna get us kind of close, it shows like, what, three point one feet, I guess it says, uh, that edge. So we might, we might tweak that a little bit if if that would not be a major impact for you folks, um.
Yeah, Rick, uh, when when we had the zoning enforcement officer look at this, he's suggesting that we try to stay twelve feet off the property line, so you know, if you stake here and then kind of go this way, I think.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, kind of, we're gonna have to angle it anyway at some point, so maybe you know, start to angle with the the first one, you know, not not the second one he's got there. Um, and we could separate it out a little bit, we we don't have to have it right next to, or you know, attached to the existing one, you can move it over a little and then sort of, uh, you know, angle sort of, uh, you know, downward from there, farther away from the property line. Um, yeah, I wish, I wish he was here to to tell you the materials, but basically, he's using the same model of the ones that are currently there, uh, exactly the same same design. Uh, we actually have a blueprint that one of the Eagle Scouts did a number of years ago, and um most of the racks have been built since then, have been have been used that same blueprint. Um, but it's, I think it's, um, I'm guessing maybe six by six posts, uh, in the ground, and then, um, probably two by six uh, hor- you know, horizontal timbers there, um. And, um, you know, the the, I can tell you that all of those that the Boy Scouts built survived Irene and, uh, uh, you know, the herd, the two troubled storms we had, uh, Irene and Sandy back in, what, the early, uh, uh, two thousand twelve, thirteen, around there. Uh, the racks they built survived, some of the others that are prior to that didn't. So, um, they've done a good job, they're they're well anchored, and, um, um, you know, it's always a great project, uh, with the Eagle Scouts.
I would, I I I would note that not all the kayaks survived those storms.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
They they were flung, uh, pretty far up field, um, from the racks.
Yep, in fact, so one of them, um, for one of those storms, one and a half uh, racks ended up in, uh, someone's yard up on Woodfield Street, and you're up toward the mooring that way, uh, and it was half a kayak there.
Yeah.
No. Oh, any other questions from commissioners?
I I guess I would reiterate Jamie's um point that do we know what the um setback requirements for these structures is in the zoning code?
Uh, yeah, so we had, we had Nigel Mills look at that, the zoning enforcement officer, and he's requesting that, um, you know, uh, basically, the the Eagle Scout, uh, work to ensure that it's a twelve-foot setback from the property line.
So is that a request, or is that a?
That's a requirement, it's in the draft motion.
Oh, that makes the current racks kind of existing non-conforming?
Well, yes.
Okay, just double checking.
Yes.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Do we need to have?
I I would say that it's Bill, I would say then he's gonna have to pull both of those forward from that position, because it looks like the one uh rack at the end where they were gonna attach it is only five point seven feet. So, yeah, it's pretty, pretty, uh, so he probably could go on to the post on the leeward side start, and then just have, he could use one post there or something like that, you know what I mean?
Don't suppose we could suggest that he consider expanding his project and making it conforming? I mean, I, that's obviously on him, but and but if there's a GoFundMe, let me know, I'll I'll.
I guess, Rick, Rick, how are these, um, posts into the ground, are they concrete, is it concrete base into the ground?
There's a concrete footing, yeah, and they're attached to the footing.
Yeah, so that would be a significant job to change that one, Phil.
Yeah, sorry, just thought.
Uh, any other questions from commissioners? I I assume, Rick, you don't have any problem with, uh, us requiring a change to this this plan that keeps you twelve, twelve feet away from the property line?
No, whatever, we we want to do what's right, and uh, none of these other ones are. I I'm not sure we knew the actual property line, we 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 knew we were off of it, you know, away from it, but we we weren't, we didn't know how close it was, and shame on us for not having that survey done, uh, back then, but, um, but we have it now, and, uh, we'll make sure these two, uh, you know, are in conformance what what you guys require.
Okay, um, Jamie, do we have any, uh, memos related to this that we need to read?
Um, I'm terribly sorry, let me look, I can't remember if we have a memo from Kevin on this one or not.
We do.
We do, okay, would you, would you like to read that, Kevin?
Oh, okay. Um, sure, so dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, to Gilbert Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. RE Coastal Area Management Review, Town of Guilford, Jacobs Beach, Seaside Avenue, Guilford, Connecticut. Town of Guilford is proposing to construct two additional boat racks to store thirty kayaks. Coastal resources at the site and adjacent to the site consist of developed shorefront, beaches, dunes, coastal hazard area, intertidal flats, tidal wetlands, and shellfish concentration areas. The work will be conducted in a FEMA flood zone, kayak storage is water-dependent uh, is is a water-dependent use as defined by the Coastal Management Act, and is appropriate to be constructed at this location. The proposed work would have a minimum, minimal impact on the coastal resources. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected during the construction process, I recommend the following conditions of approval. Any extra soil from the installation of the kayak rack should be removed from the property and not be deposited in the adjacent tidal wetlands. That's it.
Uh, Rick, uh, do you have any issue with that stipulation?
No, not at all.
All right, great. I think that's the only one. For this application.
That's correct.
All right, any other questions from commissioners? Uh, we'll move to questions from, uh, the public, anyone that has a question related to this application? Is there anyone in the public that would want to speak, uh, in support of this application? And is there anyone?
Actually, yeah, I'm Janet Ainsworth.
Sure.
I'm his, um, mentor from the troops, and I'm not sure why he's not here tonight, I expected that he would be. Perhaps a family matter came up, but, um, he turns eighteen this summer, so, you know, he's under somewhat of a gun time-wise, I'm I'm getting a project done so he can become an Eagle Scout, and he's in a troop where the majority of the boys are Eagle Scouts ultimately, so, um, I would hope you approve it.
Great, thank you, Janet. Uh, anyone else like to speak in support of this application? Um, is there anyone to speak in opposition to this obligation? All right, um, seeing that this is a coastal site plan application, so just a one night affair, is there, um, commissioner that would want to motion to close the public hearing on this?
Come over.
Okay. I think I heard Larry on that one, right? Um, Larry Rizzolo?
Yes.
Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Philip Freeman?
Yes.
Hope Johnson?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea?
Hi.
And I also, yes, we'll act on this this evening, thanks, Rick, for your time. Uh, next item on the agenda for public hearings, JP Morgan Chase Shoreline Plaza LLC, uh, eight thirty, Boston Post Road map forty-seven, lot twenty-two B's on SC, special permit application for a freestanding bank within Shoreline Plaza. Who is here to represent JP Morgan Chase?
Good evening, Jennifer Porter, I'm the attorney for the applicant, JP Morgan Chase Bank. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Great.
Hi, Nick Daly, uh, the representing the landlord, Shoreline Plaza.
And also with us this evening, we have various representatives from Chase Bank. Um, we will be calling two witnesses this evening, we have Christopher Lang from Corset Engineering, who is our civil site engineer, who will be providing testimony, and then we have, as our second witness, Nick Mendenhall. Um, she will be providing architectural testimony and walk the commission through the design. Um, just as a way of brief background, we're here tonight in connection with Chase's application for both site plan and special permit approval in connection with our proposed development of an approximately two thousand nine hundred ninety square foot bank with drive-through and related site improvements. Um, as indicated previously, this is within the Shoreline Plaza Shopping Center, which is located at eight thirty Boston Post Road, and it's situated within the shopping center, zoning district. Um, we have been working with the property owner, who you heard, um, just a moment ago, um, that's here with us this evening, uh, Shoreline Plaza LLC, um, we've been working on this project with them for a number of years, so we're happy to bring this project to fruition and present it to the commission this evening. Um, we have had, um, over the course of late last summer and, um, early last fall, several staff meetings at which we discussed the site. And, um, after that, we did appear, um, in front of the design review committee, um, in November of last year, and presented our plans. Um, we received, um, some great feedback from DRC, which was incorporated into the design and the plans that are being presented this evening. Um, we also appeared and received approval from the inland wetlands commission in January of this year. Um, if the board or commission has no questions for me, I'd like to, um, present our first witness, Mr. Lang from Corset.
That'd be great, thank you.
Good evening, this is Chris Lang from Corset's group, do you guys mind if I share my screen to show the plans while I present?
Please do.
Perfect. Please let me know if you guys can see my screen.
We do.
Um, I'll start with the site plan. Um, so our proposed scope of work would be to construct a twenty-nine, um, a two thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet Chase Bank with a a through-wall drive-through ATM. Uh, this includes surrounding, uh, parking stalls, drive aisles, sidewalk, and landscaping. Uh, there's a proposed ins- increase in green space within our limit of disturbance of about three hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, a special permit is required for application due to the fact that the maximum lot coverage, um, is twenty-five percent for, um, the maximum allowed for a special permit. The existing site is twenty-six point one percent, and the proposed, um, conditions would result in twenty-six point six percent. Um, in regards to parking, um, there is actually a decrease of twenty parking stalls um, due to the development, uh, it's still above the required number of parking stalls for the total site. Um, in regards to signage, there will be two, um, Chase Bank wall signs, as well as directional signage for uh vehicular travel to the ATM, traffic flow, and accessible parking. Um, in regards to landscaping, the landscaping has been incorporated with our design um, per DRC comments to allow for better incorporation of the landscaping design with the building architecture, um, including various trees, shrubs, and ground cover. Um, in regards to stormwater, I'll go down to the utility page. Um, we have, we have proposed a stormwater conveyance system with water quality inserts um, at each catch basin that's proposed to trap debris and oils from entering the downstream system. Um, we poles have also been added to the bottom of each catch basin, um, to allow for water to escape. Um, existing drainage patterns, uh, or characteristics of site runoff are maintained in the post-developed conditions compared to the pre-developed conditions. Um, in regards to the septic, um, there is a proposed force main. Um, I propose grinder pump adjacent to the Chase Bank, uh, due to the fact that we need to connect into the existing septic system to the south. Um, this, um, we actually did get an underground injection control permit from the State, um, Department of Environmental and Energy Protection. Um, and we, that was in effect of January first, and a facility and wastewater treatment system modification request has been submitted to the same department. Um, and the department indicated that they would approve that application upon receipt. Um, in regards to site lighting, this has been incorporated into our design as well, um, including site light poles, wall sconce lighting, wall pack units, um, and recess canopy lights. Um, and after reviewing the, um, town engineer's letter, it was stated that there was multiple, um, conditions of approval, um, that were in regards to the certificate of occupancy. Um, our site is providing, uh, two EV parking stalls, um, on the north of the site. Um, but we've been having a few equipment delays, um, in regards to receiving the actual equipment. Um, and we would request that our certificate of occupancy not be tied to the actual installation. Um, but Chase Bank is, um, is very aware of installing these in the future, and would like to bond or any other type of agreement to, uh, ensure that they will be installed, but we do not want them to be tied to the certificate of occupancy in case the lead times push us out of opening the branch when, um, in this year. Um, and with that, I'll, I will turn it over to our architect, Nick Mendenhall, to discuss the architecture for the project.
Sure, thanks, Chris, hey, everybody, thank you for having us. Um, Chris, if you want to go to A two point one, uh, thank you. So the east elevation here, uh, what you have before you guys are are DRC-approved elevations that we work the town, um, to accomplish. Um, on the east elevation, we have our main entry with the tower element, uh, chase signage and prefab uh, metal, metal, uh, canopies. And the materials that you can see before you on the tower element is a Nichiha, uh, fiber cement panelization system, as well as the darker, um, materials, Nichiha as well. The tower is the ash color, um, the darker one is considered bark. And then the Coronado Stone element to the left that you have, um, is more back of house, uh, programming, and you can see the wall sconces there. And the, um, we worked with the town on the, uh, metal prefab screening element for the meters coming into the building. And then, if you go down to the west elevation, we have the drive-up side. Um, same Coronado Stone and screening of the meters on the, uh, plan right. Um, we have our drive-up ATM here with our after-hours deposit box. Uh, Nichiha panels throughout the side elevation, and then that front left corner, um, is an ACM panel, basically like a sunshade for the, um, conference room within. Um, then, Chris, we go to A two two, please? Um, so our north elevation facing, uh, Boston Post Road, similar scenario, it's the conference room with the ACM panels, uh, chase silver there. Um, Nichiha throughout and sunshade wrapping, uh, plan left, also prefabricated, and the second chase letter set. Um, and then for the southern elevation at the parking lots, the rear of the building, um, basically, we have the Coronado Stone here, that's for the back of house, uh, programming of the bank, and then the screening element as well for the meters. Um, and then just to get a better, uh, indication of the materiality, um, Chris, if you want to pull up the, um, Concha Hocken Chase Bank. Yeah, so here you can see the Nichiha panels, the the front entry tower, chase signage. Um, plan right there is that ACM panelization, the silver conference room. And then the, um, upper left there is the Coronado Stone, cream color, uh, back of house programming elements, uh, for the Chase Bank. And then just to get a better sense of the entryway and the look and feel of the Nichiha, little close-up view here. So that, uh, pretty much covers the elevations. The DRC-approved elevations, and I'll hand it back to Jen or Chris, whoever.
Sure, does the commission have any questions, I guess, with their stuff, any of them being testimony or architectural testimony? Or with regard to the site in general that we can, um, respond to?
Um, I guess with the, with, since you have the architecture up, can you speak to any, were there any suggestions from, uh, the the design review committee that you that they had that you incorporated, just curious how that, how that, uh, meeting went?
Uh, it went well, we got approved, it was mainly the screening of the meters and the, um, Nichiha color selection throughout the building. Um, and then the tower elements to sort of juxtapose the, uh, different heights as you move down each elevation.
And as as well, this is Chris Lang from Corset's group, uh, the landscaping was reviewed, and an actual landscape plan um, sketch was sent to us, and we incorporated that into our design as well.
Could you bring up the landscape plan?
Of course.
You know, important point to make, well, Mr. Lang brings that up, is that the DRC, um, felt that changes could be made to better align the landscaping with the specific design type of the building, so, uh, Mr. Lang. So, uh, Mr. Lang, we're going to testify to um, additional comments and um, were given by the two landscape architects on DRC, separate and apart from our meeting. And then we took all of those comments and incorporated all of that into our revised landscape design, which is being presented.
Okay, thanks.
Got just a quick question. I, I know it was uh, an image of another bank, but I think we just want to be clear that the feather flags um, that were presented in front are, are non-compliant and they just want to make sure that they know that.
That's correct. I believe as part of our very initial application, we, we were not proposing those type of flags, but there was some temporary signage. And we were advised by the town with respect to what the design regulations were, um, so those would not be provided.
Thank you, sorry, just, uh, no surprises down the road.
Those flip, guys, those flags are just for grand openings. They don't, they don't stay there.
Well, it, it's grand opening or not, probably not compliant, but we'll talk about that.
Um, Larry Zola?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the outdoor lighting. What is the color temperature of the lighting and is it properly shielded to prevent uh, light from uh, reaching the sky?
Yes, all the proposed uh, light fixtures are full cutoff uh, presenting um, not allowing to escape into the sky. The color temperature for the actual site light poles are three thousand Kelvin. Um, and all of the uh, the wall pack units as well as the ATM lights um, and the wall sconce lighting are four thousand Kelvin.
Great, thank you.
You guys have the lighting plan by chance, the photometric?
Yes, I will pull that up. These um, diesel site light poles on this side um, of the drive aisle are shielded with house side shields. Um, to prevent any glare for the neighbor property.
So it looks like there, one, two, three, four, about six, six pole lights, so correct?
Correct, one, two, three, four, five, and this is an existing pole.
Okay.
Um, where, that we would be proposing a new fixture on.
And the uh, lighting fixtures have diffusers to, to help minimize gr- uh, glare?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, can, with the stormwater, you, uh, is there an oil water separator? What, you said there was something that you're using to treat the water. Is it actual oil water separator? Is it something else?
Yeah, so what we're utilizing for this, um, for every catch basin in there is this water quality snout. And, and really what it does, um, this is a side view looking. Um, and this is really the pipe that would be leaving the um, catch basin going downstream. So when the water enters in, all the floatable debris floats above this now, so it can't get into um, the public system. And any oil would also float to the top, any heavy debris would flow to the bottom. So really, and it, it filters out all of those items. Um, and then every, we're in our stormwater maintenance letter that was submitted to part of this application. Uh, there's a maintenance plan that was agreed upon uh, with the town engineer.
Scott, if I understand, if I understand correctly, this was, this plan was approved originally with the, the Shoreline Plaza site plan, is that correct? Or at least the, the proposal of placing a bank there, is that right, or is that just?
Um, Jamie, I mean, you have to speak to it. I, I think they always had it in mind, but I don't think it was part of the original application.
Not to my knowledge, Phil, but uh, Chris, if you could please show us the overall site plan. And if you could go through the parking calculations that we've arrived at. Um, I'd like the commission to see that um, in our original discussions about the sort of the loss of parking uh, with the placement of the, of the bank building. Um, the Shoreline Plaza ownership um, proceeded in striping eleven new spaces in the rear of the building there. And Chris's cursor is just shy of it, there we go. Um, and um, so, so just to be clear, um, Chris, you can go over the parking standards, but they actually exceed the required parking amount for the full plaza. We, we looked at parking uh, in the full plaza. Uh, and I did have a um, our uh, chief of, of fire department uh, look at the um, the newly striped parking spaces. Um, and he feels that the, the um, emergency passage is fine as long as the kind of no cars or trucks or anything else are parked uh, in the pathway uh, between kind of where those newly striped parking spots are and uh, the rest of the building.
Jamie, two questions on that, really quick, um. The first one would be, so just to dumb it down a little bit, hypothetically, if that space that the vacant space now is rented, that full site as a retail, there's still enough parking with the addition of that. And has there been any thought to the um, stockpiling of the snow, which we're lucky this year, but uh, in that, in that, you know, in that scenario, as that parking looks like it's is where that tenant would have to stockpile.
I'd perhaps ask uh, Nick through the Shoreline Plaza ownership to weigh in on that one.
And then the next question to follow up is going to be a dumpster location. I know it's a, it's a financial institution, not necessarily generating a ton of garbage, but is there going to be dumpsters out that way, a corral or something?
Uh, thank you, that one too. I'll ask the applicant team to field.
As to the snow, um, it's a constant problem because uh, obviously there's sometimes a lot of snow. So until recently, we would just pile it up in various locations with our snow pile company. But then Big Y was like, no, 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 you gotta move it all the way across. So we used to pile it, push it all the way down past where Walmart was, all the way to the edge of the property line. And we were leaving that last two years. But I think as an alternative, they, I think they can cart it away. It's a little bit more expensive, but they can just put it on a flatbed, whatever, a big dump truck and just drive the snow somewhere else and dump it somewhere else. So, I guess I'd have to kind of wait and see how it goes. If it, if it seems manageable, I think we would leave it piled. And if that was seeming to impact the center, then we would just haul it away.
Um, in the dumpster location?
You know, how are you handling trash removal?
Mr. Lang can address that.
Yes, in, in regards to a new dumpster enclosure, there's none proposed. Um, as you mentioned before, bank really doesn't generate that much garbage um, throughout. Um, and if the dumpsters on site are not sufficient, what we've done in the past, if we neighboring chase banks are in the ru- region, we've had them take in um, the trash off-site and they wouldn't be stored outside.
Yeah, the bu- the bulk of, of the trash in that branch is going to be shredded because it's personal, usually personal or financial information. The personal guards that said the cleaning service will take it to, to the next branch.
Right?
Uh, Chris, if you could just go through the parking calculations so the commission can fully understand uh, Commissioner DeJure's question. When we were originally looking at this application, uh, we went through and the applicant looked at the amount of square footage and the existing plaza uh, and the uses. So to answer your question, Frank, if we were to and when, when we cite uh, a new retailer in the uh, currently vacant Walmart space, uh, there would be sufficient parking.
And my apologies, I didn't comment on that after, um, after you introduced it. Uh, here is the parking calculation for the existing um, shopping center itself for uh, ninety-six, uh, with the addition of the bank, it would um, require nine extra parking stalls. Um, and that's where the five oh five is generated from. And as you can see, the provided number of parking stalls is five hundred and twenty-two.
So in theory, they could cover, uh, if my math is right, seventeen parking spots with snow and you'd still be fine. Otherwise, so I guess Nick, to kind of follow up on that, just keep an eye on how many parking spots are covering up with snow.
Okay, you got it.
And just, yeah, and there'll be less snow because the building's covering some of the parking lot.
There you go. Saving money. Um, okay, we have uh, some memos to read. Um, I'll ask Mr. Philip Johnson if he'll read Janice's memo.
If it can be pulled up, I would love to.
Yeah, uh, Chris, would you mind? Yeah, thank you very much. There you go.
Finding and zoning commission from Janice A. Plaziac PE Town Engineer, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Eight thirty, Boston Post Road, Chase Bank application. I have reviewed the special permit application for the above referenced property. The project is subject to a special permit for a number of reasons and I believe also for impervious cover exceedance as provided in two seven three dash four eight dot D of the regulations. The proposed seventy-six point oh four impervious surface is greater than a sixty percent allowed in the SC zone. However, the applicant is reducing the impervious cover of the property slightly. It is currently at seventy-six point one. Per this section of the regulation, the applica- the applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan is provided in two seven three dash seven five F three, which is consistent with the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual and meets the criteria outlined in the Drainage Section of the Zoning Regulations. The commission may need to include this finding in their decision resolution for the project. The applicant is managing the stormwater runoff for this area of the site to be redeveloped by including water quality improvements such as deep sumps and catch basins and water quality snouts on outlet pipes in the catch basins. The site is constrained for infiltration, given poor soils, but have proposed weep holes and the catch basins to take advantage of any possible infiltration that might occur. A stormwater management maintenance plan has been provided and a maintenance covenant should be submitted and filed prior to commencement of, of work. As, and as built of the system should be provided prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The site plan in special flood hazard area S P H A as mapped on the FEMA flood map insurance rate map, the site is already above the base flood elevation B F E in most areas with only a small portion of the area below the B F E being filled. This area of fill is being compensated for with the flood storage area of the proposed stormwater piping for the development area and therefore not increasing flooding in this area of the flood basin. The new building will be built above B F E and flood compliant with the ability to seek Loma to remove the building from the S P H A, that's Special Flood Hazard Area. Uh, the proposed development site is well-designed, traffic and pedestrian circulation for this area of the site works well as proposed. Ugly. The size of the park, the size of the parking spaces, eighteen by nine do not meet the standard found in two seven five dash five five E, which states parking spaces shall generally have an area of one hundred eighty square feet with a minimum length of twenty feet. A variety of spaces for larger and smaller vehicles and handicap use may be required in accordance with all applicable regulations for the proposed use. However, the proposed parking space size appears to match what is existing on the rest of the site and therefore should be adequate. The parking for the overall size appears to meet the regulations as shown in the parking count chart. The eleven additional spaces in the rear of the property may cause conflicts for emergency access and delivery, at least for some of them. The fire marshal should weigh in on the location of these spaces. It appears these spaces are not needed for meeting the minimum parking count for the plaza, so any spaces that are in conflict should be removed. The site will be losing four existing trees in the sidewalk and parking area. However, five new trees are proposed along the perimeter of the proposed development. The lighting plan is well laid out with minor light trespass onto bank property to the west, which may be a good thing for security purposes. Since this is a lighting plan for only this small area of the site, the commission may want to whip up the applicant to address how the lighting plan blends into the remainder of the site, including lighting levels and coolness slash warmth of the lighting in comparison to the remaining site. I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, the installation of stormwater systems that shall be inspected and certified by a licensed engineer. Confirming the installation is in compliance with plans and design intent for the project. Two, surveyed as-built drawings of the stormwater system and site improvements shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Three, a maintenance covenant shall be filed on the land records prior to the commencement of construction as required by two seven three dash seven five F point three G. Four, parking spaces at the rear of the plaza shall not be constructed without planning and zoning commission approval and should not be in conflict with deliveries and emergency access.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, I think just to follow up uh, with a couple of these items, we talked about the lighting. Could you speak to whether the, the just the, the question of coolness to warmth and how it's going to relate to the rest of this project is is the lighting going to seem abnormally different from the rest of the site lighting on the site? Um, or is it going to seem to blend?
This is Chris Lang from Corset's group. I believe it's going to blend. Um, the majority of the site lighting levels are coming from our site light poles. And they're using the, the three thousand Kelvin, which is the lowest for the manufacturer for that fixture head. Um, so the coolness of the light is that for the majority of our light poles um, are lower. The lowest that we can provide. So I would believe that that would, that would um, be uh, adequate for the rest of the site as well.
Okay, and you already spoke previously about the fire marshal coming and looking at those extra eleven spaces, so we're good there. Any questions from commissioners related to that? Memo? Mister Bill Freeman, could you please read this memo for Kevin McGee?
Certainly. February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, to the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. Referencing site plan and special permits JP Moore and Chase. Shoreline Plaza LLC, eight thirty, Boston Post Road, Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven. Assessor map forty-seven, lot twenty-two B. Chase Bank proposes to construct a standalone bank in the front portion of the former Walnut, Walmart store parking lot. The shopping center is over the maximum sixty percent requirement of impervious surface with seventy-six point one. The proposed plan reduces the impervious surface coverage to seventy-six point zero four percent. The stormwater management practices for the bank will consist of catch basins with weep holes, deep sumps and water quality now, the plan for the project have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with two seventy-three dash ninety-seven B subsection six of the zoning regulations. Inland wetlands are located on the north side of Boston Post Road in which the stormwater from the site discharges to at the Inland Wetlands meeting on January eleventh of twenty twenty-three, the Guilford Inland and Wetlands Commission approved the regulated activity with the conditions of eight thirty dash nine hundred Boston Post Road for regulated activity for the development of the bank located to the, in the northwest corner of the parking lot servicing the existing shopping development within a hundred foot jurisdiction review zone. I recommend the following conditions of approval in order to make sure that the natural resources are protected. One, the town of Guilford Enforcement Officer shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil start piles should be contained by soap fencing or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable materials are installed to the satisfaction of the zoning officer. To assure future compliance of the storm management system in accordance with section two seventy-three dash seventy-five dot point F of the zoning code, the applicant shall find a maintenance covenant on the land records as required by section two seventy-three dash seventy-five F Stormwater Management Subsection Sev- Seven Maintenance Convent, Covenants of the Town of Guilford Zoning Code. The maintenance covenants shall contain the file for the written maintenance and operation manual for all the stormwater management systems located on the subject site. The manual shall provide provisions for yearly inspections, maintenance of stormwater systems and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include but not be limited to weekly, monthly and quarterly inspections of the property for litter, monitoring the dumpster and outside storage areas, monitoring catch basins, the maintenance plan to provide, needs to provide a statement. that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that the inspection slash maintenance requirements may be modified and that any changes to the plan would require approval of the town engineer. An as-built drawing of the completed stormwater session prepared in accordance with section two seventy-three dash seventy-five point F Stormwater Management Subsection Six Construction, the Stormwater Management Maintenance Activities should be conducted in a coordination with the stormwater management activities within the remainder of the shopping plaza.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Um. And we have one other one. I'll let uh, Mr. Frank DeAndre handle this one.
Want me to pull it up? Are you going to pop it on?
Yeah, I think. Yep, there it is.
And this is from Sonia Marino, um, our R S M P H dated February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. J P Morgan Chase applicant Shoreline Plaza LLC, property owner eight thirty Boston Post Road. It's map forty-seven lot twenty-two B zone S C. The health department has been in meetings with the Connecticut D E E P. Property owners, Rob Sonnixon, professional engineer and other relevant parties. The agreement is that the ten thousand gallon tank that currently serves the empty Walmart building shall be used as a holding tank. Based on the actual flows which are required to be monitored, a pump out schedule will be developed. A pump out schedule will need to be submitted to the local health department when completed. However, please note that this will occur after the building has been placed and is in operation. I confirm the information above with Connecticut D E E P iPhone on February ninth, twenty twenty-three. Please note that the permit has been sent to Connecticut D E P for modification, but will take time to work through the relevant channels. Also, please note this is a temporary solution. As soon as there are new tenants in the empty building, the whole system will resume use. Everything will be handled in accordance with the regulations and other such criteria that Connecticut D E E P follows.
Thanks, Andrea. All right. Any other questions from commissioners on this item?
Uh, just maybe an explanation of why they're using it as a holding tank, just because I'm curious, I guess. Versus the whole system. I'm not quite following that.
It's a great question. Um, so I'm.
I think I could probably answer that. Uh, right now the Walmart's vacant, as you know. Um, and so there's no need to have the constant usage of this uh, storage wastewater facility. So if we use it as a storage tank during the period where nobody's there, as soon as somebody's there, we then reactivate it and get it back to normal function, but it winds up saving us a lot of money. And it doesn't seem to make much sense. And I think Sonia is in agreement that you don't have to operate it in full capacity if literally no one's in there.
So it's one of those uh, systems that requires uh, maintenance and, and you know, forces air into the system and all that. I don't know the names of them, but it's a D E E P certified system.
Yes, this is Rob Sonics and I've been working on, on system and, and it was actually Antonella Daha's recommendation that we use this, the septic tank as a holding tank. Because there's really not enough water that's going to be generate wastewater that's going to be generated by the Chase Bank to support the bacteria in the bio clear system, the advanced pretreatment system. So it's, it was a negotiation with them and we thought it was the, the best um, solution. Um, in the interim until the tenants are back in the, the retail space and the system will go back into compliance with its current permit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Kevin Clark.
Um, so yeah, regarding the, the wastewater, so I'm, I'm assuming that, that, that the hope uh, the hope is by the Chase Bank people that by the time they get their building built and get the septic online that, that there will be a tenant in that spot where Walmart used to be. I'm sure that's the ideal hope. Um. I'm wondering though, let's just say, you know, just for argument's sake, it doesn't happen. And they end up discharging to that holding tank for, for quite a while. Is there a mechanism in place to, to plug the, the the exit valve so that's water does not leave that plant, untreated water does not leave that plant? And if, if there is a mechanism in place to plug that up, who's in charge of it?
Um. There's a, an operator who's continuing to be uh, involved in the system. We've laid out a plan to the D E E P for a sort of uh, in the absence of flow monitoring. And yes, there's, there are valves that can be closed. There's no way that anything from the septic tank will be able to escape and get into the bio clear system. Um, and um, that's not anything that, that is of a, of a concern. So it'll be able to function perfectly well as a holding tank for as long as it has to. Um, and everyone's hoping that that's not very long at all.
No, I'm sure. Um, my second question, it kind of dovetails in with, with, with Sonia's memo. So I'm on, I'm on the Water Pollution Control Authority with, with, with Sonia. And we had a meeting last week and maybe ironically or not ironically enough uh, the topic of this, this came up. So it's the existing bio clear plant uh, when Walmart was, was in line was, it was out of compliance more than it was in compliance. Okay? So I'm wondering if the time comes when, and we're not, and we're not talking about a lot of wastewater coming from Chase Bank. Or we talk maybe a couple bathrooms and maybe a small kitchen. So we're not talking about a large amount of uh, effluent coming from the bank, but we are discharging that potentially into a bio clear system that had um, a lot of trouble treating the small amount of wastewater that was in their plant. I'm wondering if it's a good idea that we combine these two plants. I, I'll get to my, my main, my main question is that um, since the existing plant wasn't really able to treat the discharge just from the Walmart. Will we be, we being the Planning and Zoning Commission be able to um, weigh in at the addressing of this issue if and when the new store goes in, goes online?
Because we. The, the short answer is yes. Um. The, the reason there were several reasons that the, the plant um, was out of compliance. Uh, the, the former operators did a very good job of making adjustments to the system. Um, the Walmart effluent was surprisingly high strength and concentrated and um, it was not as, as high a volume as was expected. So the bacterial um, process in the bio clear was, it was difficult to get it adjusted properly. And that was the reason for the um, excursions and some of the effluent limitations. But in, in talking with the D E E P, they thought it was, was great if we're going to be able to add additional um, uh, flow to the system. And there has been preliminary discussions with regard to a combination of the big Y system and the uh, system for the former Walmart. Uh, it could we, you know, combine benefits and also allow um, a better operation of the, the entire system and, and assure that both of the systems remain in compliance uh, permanently.
Okay, there's, there's a lot to digest there. Um. I, I won't get, it won't get into like the big, the big Y situation at all, but I, 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 so the important thing for, for me is for this commission is that if and when the time comes when a new, a new tenant comes into where the Walmart was and there's going to be talk about a modification to the existing bio clear system is that this commission can weigh in with questions a- about, about the wastewater treatment on that site. That's, that's my main point.
Thanks, Kevin. Robert, Robert, if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounded like you're saying that the more flow actually will make the system operate better. Is that what you're saying?
That, that's correct. And the, the flow that we're expecting to get um, from the, the Chase Bank will be, you know, low strength, higher dilution. The bacteria would, would be more hap, would be happier uh, with that kind of a, of a, of a discharge. Um, there was a lot of ammonia, of ammonia in the um, in the, the Walmart system. And we were looking at it and, and trying to um, you know, come up with um, options that could be used to, to uh, improve the operation. And like I said, the operator who was running the plant did a very good job of improving it over time and it was showing really good uh, signs of improvement. Um, but then Walmart decided to go elsewhere. So um, we expect that um, anyone who will go, come in there, well, the, the first thing that, that will happen um, in response to Kevin's questions are that anytime a new tenant comes in to the plaza period, um, an engineer has to go through a detailed analysis of the, the wastewater, the quantity of wastewater, make sure that the um, that there's enough capacity in the plants to be able to properly um, treat the, the, the effluent. Uh, we did it with, when they expanded the um, the, the Beauty Academy. Um, and um, there were other, there have been other recommendations over the years, a health center. Uh, every time a restaurant comes in, we have to go through a detailed analysis and demonstrate to the D E E P that it will meet, it'll stay in compliance. So um, one of the things that I will, you know, be talking with the Antoinella about is um, possibly a better line of communication with the W P C A. Um, she does stay in very close contact with Sonia. And so I think that that, that would be the way that we would make sure that the W P C A is able to give input for whoever moves in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions from commissioners? All right, uh, any questions from the public? Um. Not seeing any questions from the public. Um, is there anyone from the public that want to speak uh, in support of this application? And is it, anyone from the, oh, I see the DJ could raise your hands. Go ahead, D. Just please state your name and address to the record. Thank you.
D Jacob sixty-one Cherry Street Guilford. I'm also president of the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce, twenty-six fourteen Boston Post Road Guilford. Shoreline Chamber represents uh, memberships across Branford, Guilford and North Branford. And I'd like to speak in favor of um, a great opportunity for Guilford to grow in um, in economic development by adding not only a new business, but a new uh, structure that adds um, enhances a parking lot that was particularly, that was the corner that was hardly ever used. Try going there on Christmas Eve or Black Friday and everybody avoided that area like plague except for the people that park their cars with signs for sale and advertising things. So by having um, the architectural's uh, rendering of the new building there, I think it's going to be an enhancement um, and add um, I think an additional life to a, a great piece of property that's already there. Um, I can't speak to light warmth or effluence or things like that. But I, we have had experience with both uh, Chase in Madison and in Branford recently um, being um, good cooperative um, builders and renovators of sites as well as being good citizens in terms of supporting the community and the community activities. And so it is, I think, a great use of that space that was underutilized. I think it's a great opportunity to enhance property and hopefully soon to have it filled by totally uh, at a hundred percent occupancy with more services to the citizens of Guilford. I do want to mention in this growing, changing environment of interest rates, having another bank to offer competitive elements to both the consumer and to businesses is um, going to be very, very helpful to the citizens and the business owners of Guilford. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. We also have a, one letter um, in support of this application. Uh, let me bring it up and let's see if we can get um.
Safe street one, right?
Yeah, it's the safe street one.
I was wondering if you're going to do that one.
Don't, don't worry about me. Uh, there's all, could you read this, please? You might be muted there.
Yeah, could you um, enlarge it just a little bit?
I will do my best. Hold on one second. This section right here.
Okay, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I support the uh, J P Morgan Chase Bank project proposed for the Shoreline Plaza. But I would like to propose a minor addition to the project. As someone who frequently walks to and from the Shoreline Plaza along Route one, it has always bothered me that there was uh, no painted crosswalk stripe, uh, crosswalk stripes at the entrance to the plaza. Uh, see the screenshot below. My experience has been that cars often pull beyond the stop line and block pedestrian access to the store. Uh, present, block pedestrian access across the entrance. And I also feel that the painted crosswalk stripes also alert drivers to the potential for pedestrians. There are other issues uh, with this crosswalk that may need to be addressed in the future. But a little bit of paint would go a long way towards improving the safety of this busy intersection. I hope this modification can be added to the proposed project. Thank you, Sam Gurritz, uh, two ninety North River Street Chair, Safe Streets Task Force.
Okay, that was kind of a sneaky support, but um, Mr. Daily, do you have a, a comment relation to his ask here?
I, I would wish I could see that screenshot, but seems very reasonable.
I got it. So he's talking about this cross right here.
I, I, I find it difficult to, to put a condition or a request that doesn't relate to the applicant or the site.
I don't disagree. I was just wondering if Mr. Daily has any comment related to future plans for the site or anything like that.
Uh, I, I still can't see it. So if I can review it.
Hold on one second. I got it. Technical difficulty.
He's talking about the.
He's, he's talking about uh, the front entrance to your entire plaza. Oh, it's not striped across the entrance here.
Uh, for the, for the record, I don't think there's one commercial driveway that has a crosswalk painted across the entrance.
None.
Zero.
To be.
Well, well, the.
I, I know Dunkin' Donuts that is being built that is required to have on across their, their.
They would certainly be.
Are we really?
It would be. There has to be a sidewalk.
There, I walk, yes, but a crosswalk is.
Okay, anyway.
Yeah, but there's a sidewalk there. There should be a, there should be painted lines on there.
So he's not wrong. It's obviously, he's, he's presenting the safe streets. So Mr. Daily, just think about that in terms of any future uh, work that's done on the plaza.
Absolutely.
Please keep that in mind.
Thank you.
We like to try to help out Safe Streets as much as we can. Uh, let's see, we got um, Mr. Tim Sperry, is this a question or a show of support? You're, you might be muted if you're trying to respond to me.
Definitely, there you go.
Okay, got me now?
Yeah, we just know.
So um, it's a, it's a, it's a not so sneaky um, support of the project with a very minor, and I, I sent you guys an email, but I'll just summarize what I'm saying. If you look at the sidewalks inside the project, not at, not where Sam was talking about, um, the, the walk, the, the walkways cross two driveways that are twenty-two feet or a little bit more than twenty-two feet wide. And um, so it's a straight shot. You come off of Route one, you fly right through the park. And um, so it's a straight shot. You come off of Route One, you fly right through the parking lot because you're desperate to make that deposit real fast. Um, if they were to simply, at the point of cross, two crosswalks, increase the crosswalk entering into the driveway by a foot on either side, you're creating the visual choke point, but you're not creating an actual choke point because they still have an eleven-foot roadway on either side, which is normal for our town roads. And so I'm just asking them to make, it makes it a little bit more safe for pedestrians crossing those two driveways if there's a little reminder to drivers to slow down.
You're talking about the main entrance or are you talking about uh, on the actual?
No, I'm talking about at this, at the site. So there's a sidewalk coming in off of Route One.
Could I, could I ask Mr. Lang to, Lang to bring up the um, site planning in for me, please?
Of course.
Okay, so um, right there. So right, that is twelve point three, I'm sorry, twenty-four point three feet wide. If you, if you extend the sidewalk, just bump out at the sidewalk, so you're making a small peninsula on either end, you now have a twenty-two-foot roadway, which is more than adequate for all cars. And then the second one is where you, the main pedestrian entrance into the bank, same thing. It's, it's uh, twenty-four feet there, and if you lower, if you decrease it to twenty-two, you're just, you're just sending a message to cars to slow down. And it's something that we're going to try and be doing at more crosswalks in town as we design them where you're, and you're also giving a pedestrian a few more seconds or few, um, you know, and more advantage in crossing it through. It's not like, you know, crossing onto the green, but um, it's just something we're trying to get more and more done where we give the impression that you need to slow down.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Ray, this, I'm not sure who to direct that to with the project team. So now I'll pick that up, that question about whether that's a feasible thing to do.
But Chris, is that something you could answer?
Yes, I think in regards to the site, um, for the proposed Chase Bank, like we mentioned earlier, um, the concern I have is within the D O T right of way. Uh, this is U S Route One, so any changes to that must be approved by the department.
This is not, this is on your property.
Yeah, he's speaking of the two, of the two um, crosswalks that you're proposing. He's saying that the, those openings are twenty-four feet and he's interested in seeing those peninsulas be extended a foot on either side so that it's twenty-two feet instead.
I might be misunderstanding. Are you, you're saying?
See that dimension there, twenty-four point three eight feet right there. So he's looking for that, he's looking for that dimension to be twenty-two feet.
At, just at the crosswalk. So it's not about the whole opening, but it's just something, you're creating a a very minor choke point in the sense of the car see, hey, wait, maybe I should slow down.
Haven't they already said that these parking spots are, you know, sub-sized anyway? And by doing this, aren't we reducing the turning?
No, you, because you're, you're way away from all the parking spaces.
Yeah, he's just making the drive out a little tighter.
Yeah, I think it's make it a little bottleneck there.
Exactly. It's, but again, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't impede, you know, two cars can very safely pass. But they realize, it, it's a visual, i- i- it's a visual cue.
The second location, uh, Chris, is a little bit down from where we're currently showing at the main entrance to the side of the building.
Right, yeah, right below.
That crosswalk in the middle.
Okay, this crosswalk.
Right, and current dimension is twenty-four feet.
I, I do have a concern with doing it with curb lines is um, putting a bottleneck like that would, I understand it would slow down drivers, but it may cause more issues than good. Um, obviously, we can adjust the site plan. Um, but for circulation of cars, I believe it, it would cause a little more harm to people running over the curb here. Especially.
Mrs. Sperry, do you have a example that you could email that we could pass along, so Jamie, that could get passed along?
Yeah, I can, what I will do is I'll reference the Safe Streets plan that the town has approved, where we actually did some of these demonstration projects where we bumped out. You know, we didn't do the concrete, obviously. We did cones to simulate what it looks like. Um, it's, it's becoming more commonplace to do this kind of stuff. And if we have, we have an opportunity here to create a slightly safer pedestrian interface rather than to go back later on and say, let's do it now. And you're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna impede cars.
Do we really think that people are racing to the bank to, to make deposits? I mean, i- i- it's an ATM drop or it's an after-hours drop. I mean.
Not a drive-through.
I understand that, but it's.
They're not operating on the bank hours. It's a.
Um, yeah, we'll have, so if we'll get, make sure that Jamie passed along the information to the um, team. Thank you.
Okay, I, uh, this is an, as an aside, what I've seen to be effective in other parts of the country is that you actually have a uh, in certain parts of Florida and things, they have a button that you push and it makes the walkway flash for twenty seconds or something, but it stops people from going. And it, I don't know, it's something that is to be thought of for Safe Streets in the future is to have actual, you know, visual note that people want to cross.
But we have one at, at Adams right now.
I found it to be effective.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it is. This is just a l- lower visual impact way of slowing them down. There's, there's not one, you know, there's not one solution for all of this. And I think rather than putting up flashing lights here, which you're gonna, you know, you're now talking about electricity, et cetera, et cetera. This one is just a, a little, a few more yards of concrete.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, if I may, uh, ask.
Sure, Larry.
Um, is that more effective than uh, say, crossing Whitfield? Um, off, off the green, there's a change in the uh, uh, there's a brick crosswalk. And there's a, a sign in the, right in the middle of the road uh, that says, you know, stop for pedestrians. I mean, that seems like a simpler thing and, and, and would your proposal be more effective than that?
I, I mean, honestly, I think it is more effective. The sign, you know, we, we've seen people get hit on Whitfield Street. We've seen uh, drivers, you know, I cross that all the time, and I've had too many cases where drivers ignore me.
Hmm.
Um, so this is just, it gets you just that one foot closer into the path, and I realize this is a low pedestrian density area. Um, just asking for a little bit more consideration to pedestrians because ideally, we're trying to get more people to walk there. You've got, you know, you've got the development going in across the street. Um, you know, we're gonna be working on more sidewalks on both sides of the road. Um, so the goal is it, that we'll be having more people walking and fewer people driving eventually.
Thanks, Tim. I think, I think it'll be effective to, as Tim mentioned, they uh, Safe Streets kind of spelled out all the options that they um, propose. So I think it'll be effective for to, for the project team to just take a look at that.
Um, thank you.
Yep, uh, Ruth D.
Hi, I'm Ruth Dwyer. I'm here on behalf of my mom Cynthia Dwyer, who lives at ninety-three State Street. And um, her big concern was, uh, and you did talk about this a lot in some terms I just didn't understand um, about the septic system.
Sure.
Um, it has been a problem over the years for her at her property, the smell that comes from um, the Walmart parking lot area um, all throughout the year, not just in the warmer months. Um, so she wanted me to just make sure that, you know, her voice was heard here tonight and that um, you know, we really want to make sure that that's something that is um, addressed. I know you talked a lot about this. Um, you know, this bank using the existing system and a, and a a holding tank, et cetera. Um, and somebody mentioned Walmart was in and out of compliance over the years. But um, I guess I just want to make sure that that's not um, forgotten that, you know, it has been a problem for a very long time with that odor coming uh, over that way and um, we just want it to be uh, at the top of the list for something that is, that people circle back and take care of for us. Thanks.
Thanks, Ruth. Um, Mr. Sonnerson, is that uh, something that you've heard as a, an issue that you guys are looking into?
Over the years, we've been looking at um, the Big Y system. I, I've been more involved in the Big Y system than I have been in the Walmart system, um, in all candor. Um, and uh, one of the things that was done was that the um, initially the vents uh, for the, the various components of the BioClear system um, were close to the ground and we elevated them and uh, up one of the telephone poles nearby. And that had a significant impact on uh, on odor along the property line, which also happens to be um, my office is at eighty-nine State Street. And um, so, and we're right behind that, that the uh, the Big Y system. Um, and uh, it had a significant positive impact on odor, odor control. I haven't been noticing it uh, in the most recent past. I don't think a lot of it, the Walmart system is a significant distance to the, to the east. And um, I don't think that the Walmart system had a lot of um, contribution to an odor problem.
I'd also note, Scott, that it, it was brought into testimony that the addition of Chase Bank would actually improve the operation of the system.
Right.
So, and, and theory, that would help with that as well.
Yep. Absolutely. Thank you, Ruth. Um, all right, uh, is there anyone else that would want to speak in support of this application? Um, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, I think, uh, Jamie, do you want to speak to, uh, this is special permit, so typically it requires um, two public hearings on this item, um, due to some technical the technicalities, we're gonna need to continue this to the second without actually delivering about um, the first, uh, Jamie, you want to say that real quick?
Sure, of, of course. I mean, to be fair here, um, we uh, made a bit of a processing error uh, in the Planning and Zoning Department, and you'll see on the agenda that we've listed this as two separate applications, both the special permit application and the site plan application. Um, typically, uh, the, the precedent in Guilford has been to list them as one application, a special permit and a site plan. Um, but I thi- I think, you know, legally, we've noticed and the applicant put up the sign and, you know, it was in the paper and letters were sent to the others, so I'm not so concerned about that. Uh, but I would like the commission to take a, a little bit of supplemental time to address two things. One was uh, Chris Lang's comment about the E V charging stations. Chris, I'm happy to uh, talk with you offline about uh, how we can, can work towards seeing that through. Uh, and the second would be also if you could just look at the uh, the Safe Streets Task Force uh, report and, and some of the examples that they've used with that uh, bump out, uh, and if we could kind of put our heads together with that and then come back for a meeting on March first, at our next meeting, something like that.
Ms. Porter, any, any final comments or anything from your team or you all set for this?
No, I, I think we would want, um, I guess, clear direction with respect to the task force. Um, we were, we were hoping obviously that the commission to, could take action this evening or potentially condition um, any consideration with respect to the feasibility of complying with that request regarding um, the task force, just because um, we had not previously seen that comment, and so it's difficult to ascertain whether or not from an engineering perspective. Um, you know, we could, we could comply with that request, certainly, obviously, to the extent that Chase couldn't, it doesn't cause any traffic-related concerns with respect to circulation at the site. Um, I'm certain that they, you know, would obviously look to, to comply. Um, with, is the expectation that, to the extent that those two items can be addressed, that the board would be in a position to take action at the next meeting in March, on March first?
Correct, that's correct. Uh, all right, seeing no for the comment, I didn't see a motion to continue this to our March first meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Sean. And Bill, uh, Larry Zola.
I think he said yes.
Yes, yes.
Uh, Kevin.
I mean, yes, yes.
Uh, Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Phil Johnson.
Yes.
Sean Cowsgrove.
Bye.
Frank DeAndrea.
Hi.
But I, I saw your finger and I also, yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it. We'll see you on March first.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thanks.
Next item on our agenda is uh, Guilford Really Partners LLC, Eden Industries LLC, three fifty-one Whitfield Street, map twenty-eight lot twelve, zone V slash M R dash one. Special permit and coastal site plan to address an existing cease and desist order issued June fourteen, twenty twenty-two for deposition of material within the coastal boundary without a coastal site plan or special permit. Um, who do we have that's gonna kick us off on this one?
Yeah, hi, uh, my name is Anthony Zemba. I'm a soil scientist and ecologist uh, with Land Tech consultants, uh, with office at uh, five eighteen Riverside Avenue in Westport, Connecticut. Um, here tonight uh, to represent uh, the property owner at three fifty-one Whitfield. Um, we currently have uh, coastal air, area management uh, review, uh, application uh, for you tonight.
Okay. Do you have a file that you want to put up on the screen, or do you need Jamie to help you with that?
Hey, Scott, maybe, maybe we can open with kind of where we are, because this is all an after the fact in terms of what's already transpired. So we kind of know what's going on.
Sure. Um, Jamie, can you give us a synopsis, please?
Um, I think if we could direct and read into the record, uh, the environmental planners memo, I think that gives a really nice synopsis. Uh, just to go back here, um, the original kind of action uh, that was happening at three fifty-one Whitfield was witnessed by um, Steve, Mr. Steve Natick, who was uh, an interim zoning enforcement officer. Uh, when I first started with the town uh, back in February or January of last year, he joined. Um, and uh, so he and Kevin McGee had been, had been working on this, and I think Kevin's memo really uh, captures the full history of the, of the project.
Okay. Um, anyone want to volunteer to read a two-page memo?
Um, yeah, I'll volunteer.
All right. I'll take over. If, if you raise your hand, I'll take over when you want.
Okay, you know, I, I, I might, I might lose my breath, you know, I might lose my voice at, at this point, but all right, I need that lo- much larger.
Working on it for you here.
All right, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, to the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, from Kevin McGee and Ramon L. Planner. Coastal Area Management Review, Guilford Realty Partners, Eden Industries LLC, three fifty-one Woodfield Street, Guilford, Connecticut. three fifty-one Woodfield Street, Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven, system map twenty lot twelve. The applicant is looking to retain soil transported, transported to the site for an adjacent industrial property. The area filled is located in FEMA AE, parentheses, EL twelve flood zone. Coastal resource policies applicable for the property are developed shorefront coastal hazard area entitled wetlands. Stealthy concentration areas are located at the mouth of West Door. Cease and desist orders were issued to the property owner by the zoning enforcement officer on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and by the wetlands enforcement officer on August third, twenty twenty-two. The orders requested that they cease all dumping of materials and install necessary erosion control measures, including silt fencing and hay bale, hay bales to stabilize the site. Following the cease and desist orders, silt fence was installed around the perimeter of the filled area. The filling was reported to Kevin McGee at CT Deep. At its, at the CT Deep, who recommended that soil sample be tested for requirements for ETPH, comma, metals, and, and a minimum PCBs, E, ETP, and VOCs. The Illinois Wetlands Commission held a showcase, show cause hearing on August tenth, twenty twenty-two, and it should have ceased and desis- ceased and correct order. The order, the order requested that the limits of the filling be placed on a survey, and the limits of the wetlands be reviewed by a wetland scientist. A planning plan be prepared, to show, I think, means to show how the area is to be stabilized and that fill material deposited on the site should be tested for hazardous, characteristics that have found to be contaminated, a remediation plan needs to be created and submitted to the commission. Soil samples shall be tested for requirements identified by Kevin Zouoy, of Connecticut Deep, for ETPH, metals, lead arsenic, aluminum, PCBs, ETP, and VOCs. Samples collect, samples collection to be conducted in the direction of a licensed environmental professional, LEP. I'm, I'm doing okay, Phil. I'll just, I'll just take. That is October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and I took, and November ninth, twenty twenty-two. Meetings heard testimony regarding the filling that occurred and information regarding the wetlands line review. The testimony included a wetlands report prepared by Anthony Zemba of Land Tech did October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, which identified seven statutory title wetlands indicator species, which include red maple, marsh elder, uh, parenthetically, high-tide brush, bush, bush, um, climbing, hemp fine, switchgrass, sloth grass, eastern poison ivy, and broadleaf cattail. The commission conducted a site walk meeting on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two to review the filling violation and the wetlands. Well, at the, well, at the walk, commissioners were able to observe wetlands vegetation in the area of tidal flow within the wetland system. Based on testimony regarding the classification of the wetlands adjacent to the filling activities, at three fifty-one Woodfield Street, the commission determined that the wetlands adjacent to this area are tidal wetlands, are tidal wetlands. And I'm, I'm assuming they may, do not fall under jurisdiction of the Guilford, Illinois Wetlands Commission. For, February fourteenth, I received a memorandum, the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, from Kate Angler, PhD, LEP. Um, the Rural Engineering Association regarding the soil sampling. Memorandum nor that no VOCs were detected above laboratory reporting limits in any of the samples. However, it was noted that the results may be biased. Low as samples were not preserved in laboratory supplied bottleware immediately upon collection as specified in Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, guidance for collection, collecting and preserving soil and sediment samples for laboratory, determination of volatile organic compounds. I need you to move that up. Lead was detected at concentration in excess of GB, pollutant mobility criteria. The memorandum recommended that additional sampling is needed to determine the soils meet the definition of quote-unquote clean fill. Samples should be additionally analyzed for lead following the, um, SPLP methodology to assess the actual leaching potential of lead in these samples. And that additional samples be collected from the site in full accordance with DEEP's guidance for collecting and preserving soil and sediment samples for laboratory determination of volatile, organic compounds and analyzed for VOCs to confirm that the lack of detect concentrations in the initial samples were not due to loss of VOCs during collection, storage, and transit. It is my recommendation that public, that, that, that a public hearing be continued. Um, and that in order to determine if the soil deposited in the property meets the classification as quote-unquote clean fill, could remain on the property. Additional soil sampling needs to be conducted in accordance with the, um, L'Oreal Engineering Associates, October eleventh, twenty-two, recommendations. Soil sa- soil sample should be collected by an LL, LEP, and should represent the full depth of full, of material deposit on the property.
Alright, great. Thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
That October eleventh memo is referenced here. Um, Jamie, do you, is it important that we read this as well?
Um, I, I mean, I think it was submitted for the commission. Um, honestly, I think, I don't know if Anthony can speak to this. I know that, uh, Brian Carey, who put forth the application for, uh, Land Tech is not present, but, um, I think there was an error in getting us this memo in a timely manner. Um, we actually received it as Kevin stated, uh, two days ago. Um, the Public Health Director is also looking into this, uh, memo and has some concerns about the lead levels, and she would like to, uh, submit, uh, perhaps some comments. Um, in addition to that, I mean, just, you know, for the, for the commission's, um, you know, information beyond what was read or was written in this memo. Uh, Steve Natick's, uh, cease and desist order did ask for an after-the-fact special permit, um, and, uh, and after-the-fact, uh, coastal site plan application, and that's what you see before you. But as Kevin's memo is stating, there's some concern about how the soils were tested, um, and, and a desire to have them tested again.
I'll just, I'll just say parenthetically, you know, I, I can't believe we're, I can't believe we're at this point. Why would this stuff have been dumped from a property, you know, four hundred yards away? I, I'm just, I'm amazed by this.
I, I'm also somewhat stunned.
From a former, former paving company's site.
And we also have no quantities in terms of how much material was brought in, uh, when it started, when it was identified, when it stopped, and what was done after the cease and desist.
It's, it's, it's just, it's, it's incredible.
Yeah, even in Kevin's memo, he didn't make any reference to the quantity of material deposited. I mean, do we even know? Has it, has it, has there been a declaration of, of how much material was brought in and what? You know, whether or not anybody asked, you know, the town engineer, whether or not this was okay to do, or was it just done?
Um, I get the impression it was just done.
Yeah, I think we, we might want to ask the town engineer if, if she was aware of a desire to move this material and whether or not any type of discussion was had, you know, as to where this could be deposited.
It, it, it is, it is just, it is incredible.
They could survey the pile, you know, with a surveyor.
No, but, but the fact, the fact that they had the audacity to do it i- is to me, the thing, aside from the, the chemical levels, the lead levels, anything they test at the site where they dump it, 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 it's just, they did it in plain sight, they did it without a permit.
When, when, when we walked off the site, I'm talking about the Wetlands Commission now, actually, um, not sure if it was Kevin McGee who mentioned it, or if it was somebody who was representing the applicant. On the site, they said, well, you know, this is all gonna be moot anyway, because we think we're gonna need a lot of this still back at the original site, so this is all gonna be gone.
So they're now gonna go into the tidal wetlands and excavate it out?
So.
I hate, I hate to be brutal about this. Why only, why don't they just put it on the lawn next to the building that's not in the tidal wetlands if that's where they wanted to, to deposit it?
So I think for the record, there was only a small amount of deposition actually in the tidal wetlands. Most of it was adjacent, but yes, I think that.
Yes. Uh, there is a, there is a map in your materials packet that shows the delineation of the tidal wetlands.
Well, I just wanted to show that, because that was on the, the end of the memos train that we just read into the record.
So you, you were circling the area then?
That was the area, yes. Um, now, I'd like to move on to, uh, I'm sorry, sir, from Land Tech, I forgot, I forgot your name, I apologize.
Anthony Zemba from.
Anthony, hi, thank you for coming to, uh, talk about this application.
Certainly.
Do you, do you have, uh, certainly you heard some of the comments already, if you have information about the, the amount of material or any of that, that you could share, that would be helpful, as well as if you want to present your application, please do so.
Well, so, the, um, the, the letter from the LEP, um, the Licensed Environmental Professional, who, who is the one, uh, responsible for, um, coordinating the sampling of the material, um, uh, coordinating the analysis done by the analytical testing laboratory, and then, uh, who, who is also responsible for interpreting the, the results of that analysis. Um, put that letter, uh, together and submitted it. I, I thought, i- if we could scroll up to the beginning of that letter, I'm not sure. I, I think it was issued to Kevin, uh, McGee. Well, one way or the other, that never, that letter never made it to us. Uh, we didn't know that it existed. Uh, we were, shared the lab results, um, which we appended to, I believe, to our, um, uh, our application. It was Kevin that had called us, um, I think this week, looking for a copy of that letter. Um, and so, having never been sent that letter, we had to scramble and ask our client, um, for a copy of the letter, and, uh, our client didn't have it either. So, um, we had to go back to LaRoe and say, did you ever write a letter? None of us seem to have gotten a copy. Um, so we're, we're just hearing about this, uh, for the first time ourselves. Uh, as I said, you know, Land Tech was not responsible, uh, for doing the, the, uh, the sampling, um, because we're not licensed environmental professionals. So long and short of it is tonight, um, it's, it's apparent to us that, um, we need to comply with this letter from Kevin McGee that says, uh, that additional soil sampling needs to be conducted, uh, in accordance with LaRoe Engineering's, uh, recommendations. And so I think at this point, it, it would make sense for us to table our application, uh, and go back and address those comments, uh, which could have been done, uh, in the first place.
Probably put together a list of questions that we could like you to answer as opposed to trying to dance this one around again, because from your answer, I didn't get a sense that you were, had knowledge of when it started, how much fill was deposited.
That's correct, because, um, we, we were, um, pulled in to the project. Um, I guess after somebody from the town, uh, had noticed that they were, um, uh, trucks were coming to the site. And, um, they had erroneously thought that this material was being deposited in, in the wetland. Uh, and it turns out it was not, it was being deposited adjacent to one. Um, so, um, and, and quite frankly, I'm not sure why the town would, would allow that to continue to happen if they thought it was being deposited into a wetland. I'm not sure why they didn't just say something right there, but, um, they watched a number of truckloads come in, we were told, and, uh, then issued this, uh, this order. So.
You're throwing it back in the town?
I'm sorry, Mr. Zemba, as soon as the day that this was noticed without a permit, a cease and desist order was written and delivered.
You are looking at a cease and desist order coming from deep, and you're looking at a probably a remediation order from deep. So, you know, don't throw it back in the town.
No, I'm not. I'm just saying that I, we don't know what the quantities were, because we weren't involved at that, at that, at that point. Uh, what my involvement, I was, I was asked to come in to delineate the wetlands, which I did. Um, and.
Do we know if the client is aware of the number of truckloads that were deposited? Or was it just keep digging until we feel we've got this, you know, site the way we want? Not, I'm talking about the site that where they're building the condos, not where they're dumping the material.
Yeah, so I don't know if, if the quantity was ever the issue. I think that the issue was where the material was placed and if it was in a wetland or not. And then the issue came up, is this a tidal wetland or is it an inland wetland? Um, and so, you know, that's, that's, those are the, the things that we've been working to answer. So, we, we can get you questions, answers to the questions that you have. If you send us a list, we'd be glad to get those answers for you.
Yeah, that, that, that's a technicality, because, you know, taking, taking fill from a former asphalt site and pumping it even near a wetlands, you, you're skirting the boundaries of, you know, breaking the law.
Um, I think.
They have often reviewed to begin with.
Jamie, you mentioned that there was other town, uh, offices or agencies that are gonna have comments related to this memo that just kind of got circulated this week, correct?
Uh, yes, I, I do think the local health department will be looking into it.
So not just Laurie's memo, but there'll also be other memos coming down the pike, Anthony, um, that will be sent your way through, Jamie.
I would, I would note that this, that this commission has had a similar, uh, dumping violation in the past, where we have required, and the DEP has required, uh, removal of deposited materials. Um, and that was not in the, in the distant past. Frank, you probably remembered, it was on Meadow Street.
Yes, yes, sir.
I remember it too.
It, it, it's not unprecedented, and that was for, I would say, a significantly less amount of, and I, I have no idea, because no one's telling me how much material was deposited, but they were very clear about how much was deposited there and how much had to be removed.
I, I do have a question. Who hired the folks to, the Lo- the L'Oreal folks? Who engaged them and paid them to do this test? Uh, that was the property owner, uh, LaRoe Engineering Associates, from what I understand, was already, uh, working, uh, for the property owner on, on the adjacent site, and so that's why the property owner said that they, they'd take care of, um, getting the. But you, you just said before that the property owner never got the letter when you asked him about it? Yeah, apparently he was never issued that letter either. I, I believe it was the contractors working for the property owner.
I think, I, I think before this is over, deep will, deep will do their own testing. And the property owner, who has a vested interest in the results of the testing, will not have anything to do with the testing.
Funny that way, isn't it?
Yeah.
You know.
Exactly.
If you're, if you're not looking for something, how it tends to disappear. But it's the, the, the property owner had to have allowed them to come from over at Eagles Watch to, to there, correct?
Because they're two separate owners.
No, they're not. They're common owners.
Same owner, yeah.
Yep, so.
Just dump it in my other backyard.
Okay, so Jamie, uh, I'm sorry, um, how, what's the best way to proceed on this? It sounds like there's work to be done before. It sounds like there's work to be done before we even see this again, right? So should we introduce this into perpetuity or to?
It's a question for Mr. Zamba, sorry, Phil, I just want to get back to sort of like the, the direct next, next ask here. Which is, uh, we need to feel, um, assured that the soil sampling was conducted. Uh, in the proper way, so I think that, uh, LanTech now, Mr. Zamba is aware of this memo, and so is the property owner. And should go back and try to, uh, respond to our environmental planners. Uh, memo requesting additional soil sampling, and then at that point, uh, I, I would hope that we. Indetermine, uh, whether or not a remediation plan is, is necessary.
Um, what I might also suggest is that, that. We as a group can submit questions we'd like answered directly to you, Jamie, not copying the group, this is not group speak, this is not. This is just, uh, independent questions that we'd like to have you bring to the client and get answers.
Okay.
And in the spirit of time and thoughtful questioning.
Yep. I don't have a problem with that, I mean, I do think that, um, I would like to. Uh, have an opportunity for, um, the commission to, I believe a memo was written by. Uh, Mr. Brian Carey that was appended to this, uh, application, kind of explaining the back and forth. It's my understanding that deep really, uh, doesn't have jurisdiction here, uh, but, but I'll look into that a little bit.
I mean, the, the fact that deep had jurisdiction. Um. In the Meadow, is it Meadow Lane?
But that was, that was clearly in the tidal wetlands, um, there's only a, I mean, I don't, I don't want to present for the applicant, so I'm going to be quiet.
I, I, I believe from conversations that the amount of fill that was found to be in the tidal wetland area was not enough, not significant enough to. Draw their interest. That was my impression.
Rather, we should figure out what that level is then, because we should green light people to fill in up to that point.
Yeah, yeah, and so that was one of the things that the town had asked for, uh, was, uh, to. Uh, conduct the wetland deline- delineation, uh, get, get that, uh, limit of those tidal wetlands on a site plan. And compare that to, uh, the delineation that had, uh, been done, uh, years ago. Um, and it's, we did notice that there was a discrepancy. Um, on, on one side of the site, and that represents some area where that fill had been pushed into. Uh, the tidal wetland, uh, in, in a small sliver on one side. So, um, and when we talked to Kevin Zavoya about that. Um, we said, you know, to us, it makes sense to excavate out that fill back to that original wetland line that was conducted years ago. Uh, so then we can be back, uh, outside, uh, the limits of the wetland, and, um, he seemed to. Think that that was a prudent approach.
Yeah, I, I'm curious, Kevin, from, uh, your perspective, uh, are we always also concerned about rain? And leaching of heavy metals, et cetera, into the wetland, even though the pile isn't directly on the wetland? What, what's your thinking on that?
Oh, absolutely, I, I think, I think one of the components that was missing from these test results and that Kevin referred to. Was an SPLP test. And, and an SPLP test is actually done specifically for that reason. Uh, it's a good way to measure the first couple inches of soil and kind of give you a. General and, uh, general knowledge of what chemicals are there, it's not the most accurate, it's not as accurate as TCLP. But it, it, what, what it will tell you is, is how tho- those contaminants, if any, will leach through the soil profile.
And, and Kevin, so. Test normally conducted, always conducted. Occasionally conducted by a private lab or by deep?
Uh, it would be a private lab submitted.
A licensed, uh, LEP.
Yeah, yeah, what's going to happen is a licensed LEP is probably going to be in charge of this site. Maybe take the samples and then they will submit them to a licensed lab, which.
But not, but not one hired by the owner of the property.
That, that is generally correct, Sean. Although I think, what's one of the things that's interesting, if you read the report. So the report was written by, I think, I don't, I don't have, I. I Xed out of the report. Um, the woman who wrote the letter to Kevin.
Kate Angler?
Yes, thank you, she's from what, L'Oreal, I think that's how you pronounce it. If you read it, and I could be completely wrong, but it's, it's almost like she called out a fellow L'Oreal employee about. His sampling procedure. That's what it looks like, because it was a L'Oreal employee who took the samples, and yet she is, so it was interesting, you generally don't see the. I don't know, kind of.
There, there also seemed to be quite a bit of criticism from the deep about the actual handling of samples.
Which, um, yeah, no, it was under VOCs.
I guess it, it, again goes to, you know, we don't know how much has been put there, so we don't know how deep. Now, I'm not talking about Department of Energy, but we don't know how thick the layer deposits are, and we don't know what's at the bottom, and we don't know what's at the top.
And we don't know, uh, that this happened in twenty twenty-two, and we don't know how leaching has happened since then.
Well, they were, they, at the very least, they were required to put in, um. Sil- sil fence and.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that doesn't cover the stuff that's.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
Couple of inches underground.
A two-inch sample of the surface isn't going to tell you what's four feet down.
Right.
It is not. Hey, Ca- Ca- this is a question for Kevin, it, it, from what Phil said, it looks like they're, they went right up to the, to the line of the. Wetlands, is that correct?
Title wetlands.
Yeah, but isn't there a, a upland review or, uh, similar to a normal wetlands or no?
Not, not for the inland wetlands commission, no.
Hmm.
Um, we, no, we, we went without sight with a fine-tooth comb, uh, like Mr., uh, Zamba said, that, uh. There was a discrepancy in two wetland scientists, uh, delineation of the site, so we decided to go out there and take a look for ourselves. And determined that there were no inland wetlands, and as you guys have probably heard, we do not like to give up jurisdiction if we don't have to. The Wetlands Commission, and, and we were, uh, it was, we punted, it was. So no, we don't have any title.
I think we could put together a pretty good list of questions to send to Jamie and, um, perhaps. Continue this to our next meeting or the meeting after, depending on what Mr. Zamba thinks, um. He needs from a time standpoint to address the questions, which he doesn't know what they are yet.
Do you have a suggestion of one you'd like us to table to, Mr. Zamba?
Oh, well, I, I guess that depends on what kind of questions you have and how long it takes to get those answers. And, uh, like, like I said, LaRoe Engineering, the LEPs, uh, are, are not our subcontractors, they work directly for the property owner. So I can't speak to their availability.
Uh. I mean, so we could, we could set it for the first, and then you could table it again, or you could set it to the seventeenth, and do whatever.
Okay, I, I think that would be prudent to set it, yeah, for the first and then table it again if we have to. I mean, so typically, it, it ta- for a standard laboratory turnaround time. Uh, for these types of tests, I think is about two weeks, um, they can be expedited, but you have, you know, you have to, to pay that. That surcharge, and then, uh, the, uh, the lab has to have that kind of availability in, in their staffing and their workload to be able to do an expedited test. So, um, you know, y- y- you, you're thinking, you, you mobilize to the site within a week. Uh, collect the, the, the samples. Getting to the lab under standard turnaround time, maybe a couple of weeks, so it's, it's, we're probably looking at a month before we can.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd be better off.
I think we're in, we're, you know, where do we talk about this in April?
Right. I, I, I think the first is pretty aggressive, so I don't, I might suggest, Scott, but if you're the chairman, that we could at least consider looking at it the fifteenth. But if we have to go beyond that, that's fine too, I think we want to just make sure we do this one right.
Yeah, it's, the only reason why is tech, I mean, and Jamie can back me up, but it's technically on the applicant to, to make that decision of one way.
And they can, they can ask for it to be, uh, postponed without penalty.
Um, I guess the one thing I would have you note is what is our timelines from submission of? This is a special permit to the time we have to act on it and keep an eye on.
Sixty-five days, but.
Okay, so just, just make sure we, we're well aware of what those parameters are, so we don't.
There, there could be an option to just reject the special permit and ask them to resubmit. Um, with the requirement of additional information.
Yeah, yeah, but there's, I mean, that's, that's no different than tabling until.
Okay, right, but we, we can't table it indefinitely.
No, we have to act in five days.
But, but if we keep track of the timeline and. They either give an extension or we.
Right, unless the applicant gives us an extension, correct? So we'll keep tracking.
Okay.
There is, there is a copy of the original testing results out there somewhere, if anybody would find those relevant. I mean, you may consider it a moot point at this point, since they're doing retesting, but there were some aspects of that testing that were. The, accurate.
And, and, and so what would be interesting is to see if a secondary testing by a different lab.
Right.
How it compares to the first testing.
Yes.
Then you compare it to the memo or the letter that we got. From the associate at the laboratory. That had some. Questions about the process they used in the first place.
Yeah, I, I can take a look through my past emails and see if I can come across it, and then I can, I can send it to everybody.
That'd be great.
Part of the public record, so I, I, I'm pretty sure I'm free to send it, if I can't find it, and I will. In my emails, then I'll make sure that it gets, gets out.
I have a question for Jamie, but just in general, is it allowed to dump materials that have? I mean.
No, well, I mean.
You can't just like go dump dirty dirt and.
For whose jurisdiction, I'm not sure, um, but what I can say is that Steve Natick did feel that the amount exceeded. The requirements for a special permit, um, so there, there is some. Well, uh, no, uh, technically, I don't think we know the full amount. Uh, but I do want to say, Kevin, if you could just send that to me, and then I'll put it into the public record. When we get to emailing everybody, uh, we can get into some quorum challenges there.
Perfect, yeah, you got it, yep.
Curiosity, what is, what is the amount that triggers a special permit, do you know?
I forget, to, to, it's a, it's a certain, uh, cubic yardage I'd have to look, but it's.
Not many.
I think it's, well, I don't know, I mean, like if we put it into consideration, the, the Kerme Pond. Remember the pond that was excavated a couple of months ago that hit the limit, so it's not a small amount, it's sizable.
I mean, it's at least, it's greater than one truckload, right? Because people get.
Oh, yes, yes.
Stuff dumped on their, on their land all the time.
Yes, it's greater than one.
So it's definitely greater than one truckload, which is typically. You know, could be up to twenty tons.
But, yeah.
And there's, I just want to, um, add, uh, the, the gentleman from LanTech.
Yeah, Anthony Zamba, yep.
I'm, I apologize for getting heated, but, uh, you were put in a very, very difficult position tonight, and I appreciate that.
You, you were, Anthony, thank you for your attendance.
Taking one for the team, Anthony.
But you took it well. Yeah, so, uh, so just, just to be clear, uh, we will be receiving a letter of questions that we need to respond to. Um, we, we know that we need to do the, the testing and. Uh, the VOC testing in accordance with the DEP's guidance for collecting preserve in soils and, and sediment samples for VOCs. We know that we need to do the, the leaching procedure, uh, testing, um, but then, then you all had a bunch of. Additional questions that you'll be sending us that we'll need to respond to as well, correct?
And that, and also there may be, uh, other town agencies that are going to.
Right.
This memo and have their own comments as well.
Gotcha.
All right.
So in other, in other words, you're in the crosshairs.
Don't forget to bill the client.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to table this to March first meeting?
So, so move.
Thank you, Sean. Second from Bill Freeman, Larry Zolo. He's gone?
Yes.
Yeah. Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Philip Johnson.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea.
Affirmative.
And I also, yes, um, just keep in touch with Jamie, um, Anthony about. Whether you, if you want to just table this straight away and not even show up, that's fine, you can just let Jamie know and she'll let us know. All right?
For, for the, uh, for the.
Meeting, if it looks like it's not going to be worth it, then just let Jamie know and she'll.
Will do, okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's move into deliberation of public hearing, I'm, it's been a little while, so you guys might not remember, but. Would anyone like to make a motion related to, uh, two kayak racks at Jacob's Beach?
I don't know, do we have to make, can we just make it up, or is there actually one to read?
One to read.
No, we, we should, we should debate this.
Oh, we will.
Those Eagle Scouts are a bunch of scammers.
Well, you know what, that dude's right up to the line, because at eighteen, they, they, you can't do it anymore.
All right, voted at the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, approve a coastal site plan at one forty Seaside Avenue, map twenty-four, lot zero zero six, zone R three. For two kayak racks at Jacob's Beach, the approved plans are. Site plan Jacob's Beach, prepare for the town of Guilford by Thomas A. Stevens and Associates Incorporated, dated on. One thirty-one twenty-three one sheet, this application is approved with the following conditions, one. An updated site plan depicting the location of the proposed racks, which complies with all small structure setback requirements, including the twelve-foot side property line setback. Shall be prepared and submitted to the planning and zoning department in the form of a digital PDF and one printed hard copy prior to zoning enforcement. Officers review and sign off of building permits, two, any ex- any excess soil from the installation of the kayak rack. Shall be trucked off-site and not deposited into the adjacent tidal wetlands. And three, the site should be inspected daily to ensure that all construction debris has been properly disposed of in a covered dumpster. This application is approved based upon a finding that it conforms with the zoning code, and the development is in accordance with the town's coastal area management regulations. The coastal site plan is effective fifteen days after the legal notice of the decision is published in a filing and upon filing with the town clerk.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Frank, second from Bill. Discussion, um, can we make him stand up at our next public meeting and just?
Yeah, that was a little weird.
We have an in-person public meeting coming up, do you want to make him stand up in front of the whole town?
Oh, let the kid have his kayak.
But, uh, to the other gentleman's point, he should have been there, but. Maybe he's shy.
Birthday's coming up.
Who knows? Any actual question, are we good? I mean, as far as. Uh, as it was twelve feet away, then I think I don't have any issue with this.
You know, I, I was just, and it doesn't, it doesn't relate to building the kayak rack, but. There really should be some mechanism to secure the kayaks.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, a good kayak.
There was reference to one half kayak, and trust me, I live across the street from that marsh, it was littered with kayaks.
Normally, I mean, when I had mine down there, uh, a couple of years ago. You know, I had a, uh. A chain.
By clock, by clock or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure they have regulations about what you're supposed to do with your kayaks, and I'm sure a whole bunch of people just did not follow it.
Oh, people don't follow regulations?
I know, it's. All right, we have a motion in a second and discussion, uh, Larry Zolo.
Yes.
Yes, Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Philip Johnson.
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes.
Yeah, the, uh, just a segue, some of the other Eagle Scout projects they've done have been just terrific, like there's a walkway back behind. Um. What we call it, Secret Beach, it's that soccer field down by Jacob's, and the sign in the, the, the red shack. On Grass Island, I mean, it's just, there's some real good projects, they, they really put some thought.
It's funny, you call that Secret Beach, because one day, we just, I just happened to walk down there. And I was like, what the heck is this? This is beautiful beach here.
Yeah, and there's a. And so that, the walkway that takes you out to there was an Eagle Scout project. I mean, it used to be, you kind of had to teeter your way across driftwood and logs and mud and.
Yeah, it's also created some embarrassing moments for our town, so. You know, pluses and minuses. Yeah, it's also created some embarrassing moments for our town, so, you know, positives and minuses. The whole Chaffigan Island issue, I find very embarrassing, but.
Oh, with the gazebo?
That's just me, yes.
Yeah, well, also the fact that we approved the renovation of the Red Shack on Grass Island without like the cam, right?
Well, you know, potato.
I have a question about the Eden Industries thing is, why is this? Thing to be just a swirl of confusion and mess, I mean, what is going on here? It's a sight of hands.
Literally it's because that memo never went to anybody in October until literally this week, Jamie?
Yes, that's right, well, yeah, two days.
So that's pretty much why, nobody knows anything, cause nobody's.
So, can, can, can we, I mean, th- this is, this is, this is not. Um, a small item, uh, you know, so procedurally, I mean. I, I guess the question is, who's in charge? I mean, if these, if these. Memos regarding an item as important as this are, are not being circulated or.
Well, yeah.
For the right people, who, who's responsible for that?
Well, so that it's separate issues, right? They have to, they have to, uh. Fulfill the, the ramifications or fulfill the requirements of all the different cease and desists that have happened. And that's separate than this application that's, that's coming before us as well, is that right, Jamie?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I think in short, uh, it's the applicant's responsibility.
Right.
I mean, we, you know, we issued the cease and desist back in June. Uh, you know, and we put it through the paces as Kevin Commissioner Clark told us, you know, it went before inland wetlands. Uh, you know, after they got the cease and desist, and then it went before D E P and they did the delineation. But we just never got that piece of information about the soils analysis, so that didn't come to us until. Uh, you know, two days before the public hearing, so.
But, but, but who, uh, the soils analysis went to whom first?
Well, I mean, I mean, the, the memo itself was, was drafted to Kevin, but um, when we followed up, I followed up with Brian Carey on. Monday and I asked.
But, but when, when did the memo from the soil, when did the memo on the soils analysis come in?
Monday, Tuesday, something like that.
Oh, God.
Monday, yeah, I mean, but it was, but it was dated in October, so.
Right.
You know, the applicant needs to, the applicant needs to be here to present like why a memo that was dated in October was not shared with the town.
Explain to me how the two properties are related, I, I, maybe I'm just dopey, I don't know.
Owns both.
Same owner.
And he, as he's developing Eagles watch.
Joint ownership, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So why is it, why are we not tying the two together in some way to make things move a little quicker?
They, it, it, they're obviously tied together, I mean.
Well, he came from here and went to there, why are we not stopping both?
It seems less than coincidental that the memo came in so close to our meeting.
Um, so.
Are there, are there procedures in place for delivering memos like this? I mean, I can't remember a case where memos just kind of didn't show.
Well, I mean, they're supposed to be in.
Are they supposed to come in like?
Certain deadline before a meeting, right, Jamie, that?
Well, I mean, I mean, it, it's, sure, I mean, a legal notice asks for things twenty-four hours before the meeting. Uh, do we take letters of support two hours before the meeting? Yes, we do.
Well, in some, yeah, twenty-four hours is even aggressive, cause it doesn't give our, our um, town staff time to.
No, I mean, typically, and Jerneek is learning the, the paces here, but you know, we'd like to have everything in. By the Friday before the meeting.
Friday, right.
Jerneek, you gotta be enjoying yourself.
That's a wild ride already, so.
All right, back to my, back to my question, Scott, why is, if these two properties are related and the materials came from A and went to B? Why are we not tying the two together in some way that makes things more uh, folk, come into focus more cle- clearly? For the, the person who did the, uh, the transaction where he moved the material from A to B.
Sure.
Why, why, why are we not doing that?
Big, as far as planning is, as far as zoning is concerned, it's all about the land, it's all about the land that it was dumped on. Um, there's really no regulation in terms of taking material off, um.
So, uh.
So it's no jurisdiction there, basically, I mean, like the, I don't even know if the building department has jurisdiction over that kind of stuff.
Bill, we would need a special prosecutor for that.
Well, I, I have a feeling they're feeling it on both.
I mean, I'm, yeah, we can talk about offline, but I'm dealing with a lot of soil-related issues on a current job that I'm working and it's very complicated.
I don't know, I, yeah, I believe me, I've been down this road before, so, but I never just took it from A and stuck it on B.
Well, yeah, cause you're, you know, a very concerning citizen, self-aware, I guess, you know, all right, um. Let's continue with our regular meeting, uh, we have a pending application from George Spencer. Uh, I must, was there an updated agenda that I missed? Cause I'm not seeing the, the site plan under new applications, Jamie?
I did not either.
Um, yes, there was an updated agenda. Um, it's on the website and it's posted at the town clerk's office.
You got me, you got me there.
But maybe we, maybe we didn't.
Is there any other new, you want to pop it up so I can officially?
Yes, yes, sure, give me, give me just a second, sorry.
So I think I'm reading between the lines there, you should, I should go to the website before every meeting.
Well, typically we try to send it to you, but I'm, I'm not going to say that, that we don't make mistakes.
It just means that.
No, not, not at all, I just. I don't mind doing that.
In a word, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, pending applications, George Spencer, so we don't need to, uh, request an applicant to table to March first, uh, do I hear a motion? Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank, uh, in favor, please say aye.
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 See.
Yes.
I mean, that's not what I asked for, but all right, fine. Um, and new application, J P Morgan Chase have, uh, Shoreline Plaza, LLC, eight thirty, uh, Boston Bus Road, map forty-seven, lot twenty-two B. Zone S C, site plan application for a freestanding bank within Shoreline Plaza, do we need to like officially receive this or anything?
No, no, you heard it tonight, you heard a joint application.
All right, awesome.
So is it supposed to be a separate application or a joint application?
It's, it's, the precedent in town is to list them jointly, to list them and, uh.
They're kind of, I think the way that you've been doing your, uh, our motions lately. Kind of separates them out in the motion stage a little bit, at least we, we speak to each one, um, when we're making our motion.
Yeah.
Um, all right, was anyone able to review the minutes from our February first meeting, or is this the February, yeah, February first? I don't even know what day I meant, it was. February first meeting. Anyone able to review?
Yes.
Thank you, Sean, uh, anyone like to make a motion about approving the minutes from February first?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Phil.
I abstain.
All right, anyone else want to abstain?
Uh, yes, I'll abstain.
All right, otherwise all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Jamie, any further business for this evening?
Uh, just to state that next week, next Thursday, uh, at the community center, beginning at seven thirty. Will hold an in-person public information meeting for our zoning regulations. Um, so on the website is, uh, as of the fourteenth, we have the most recently updated, uh. The full regulations, uh, and what I'd really like to do at the public information meeting is just. Offer an opportunity for people to come and ask questions and look at certain sections of the regs and I'm trying to. You know, provide a few, uh, pronouns at the community center, uh, a few days before and after the meeting. In order to capture maybe a few suggestions or comments, um, but the goal really is to be finished. You know, not touch the regs anymore after March thirteenth and open them for a, um, thirty-five day public comment period.
There, if there are specific people that have made comments regarding it, maybe we can, you can reach out to them. And see if we can solicit their questions in advance, so we can have some proper answers.
Yeah, so one of the things that I'd like to do before the end of the week is I'm trying to compile all of the letters that we've received. Uh, to share them with you and just kind of give a digest of what the comments were. Um, I, I think that might be helpful, just to kind of see, uh, you know, kind of the comments that we've received and how we've addressed them or how we haven't.
Some are very specific, some are very general, and typically when Jamie and Glenn receive those letters, they try to set up a meeting. With that person to then discuss those letters, so.
Right.
Everyone should be confident that everything's being addressed whenever it comes up.
And, and Jamie, um, is this, um, public meeting going to be available both in person and via Zoom?
No, just in person, um, I'm even, I'm even still trying to figure out like how I can project. Certain things at the community center, cause I wasn't going to do it in the room that we typically hold meetings in, I wanted to make it a little bit more.
Could you move the equipment to, I mean, can you get the equipment into the room necessary to project?
I think so, I'll talk to Todd and, uh, Todd Rake and some of the other folks at the community center who figured out.
And I, I'm sure you're thinking about this, but if you can do that. Do it a couple of days before and do it.
Yeah.
I do have a question about the, the map review, uh, the, the special permit versus. Where, where does that?
Haven't done that.
That whole must brick are gonna be come.
It's gonna have to be, we're gonna have to have a working meeting at some point, Jamie, right?
Yeah.
Uh, last question.
You know, I don't know, you, I think, I mean, what I would advise is that. At some point, I mean, one of the things that I am working on for the public information meeting is just to articulate. What we are gonna have to just wait on, uh, for, for a future update and what, what we're comfortable moving forward.
That's fine. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we could generally, we could generally discuss whether just. Whether the, you guys, so the first go around, you took the most strenuous thing, we could discuss at some point. Whether we want to reverse that and have you take the least strenuous option. That's, that's something that's easy for us to discuss as opposed to going through each individual one and discussing them individually.
Yeah, and again, you know, I'm happy to reshare the, you know, I went through the process of doing that kind of comparative use tables. For table five, which was huge and big, but then kind of distilled it down into one, like here are the differences. Uh, and I think if you look at that and wanna, you know, provide some comments, I mean, I'm. I, I'm happy to hold a working session if, if you think you can. Uh, you know.
As I went through it, I tended to lean more what Scott was saying, which was in a, a more lenient fashion. Be just, just because I didn't want to, I don't want to feel like people are being penalized for the change, I would rather have people, maybe it won't be perfect. But it would be better than having folks feel as though they were penalized, and I know that the. Uh, Russ sent a pretty long, uh, letter, as granular as I could imagine. And, uh, and, and so that's, that whole thing's out there, which I talked to you a little bit about before, uh, but, uh, so.
Yeah, we had, we had a great, uh, discussion with Russ and may, may have another one, but.
Yeah, Jamie, Jamie, are you aware on, uh, the events page, if you go to the twenty-third? And then click on the meeting and then click on the link to the website, it says, uh, error not found.
Events page, what is that, the town calendar?
Yeah, the town calendar, so. Yeah, they will.
Okay, Tracy does that, thank you, I'll, I'll ask her to update that one.
Okay.
Um, I also don't know if you had a look at the, at our website, uh, recently, but we've, we've updated the schedule to adoption. It looks a little, uh, it looks a little silly, but, um, let's see if I can take you all there, um, let's see. Here we go. Um, you know, I tried to basically update it showing, you know, here we are, you know, our next public information meeting. And then we're bringing it to a close. You like that?
I think you need to put some arrows, you know, around the outside.
Like, there it is.
Very effective, very effective. Four, four or five arrows.
Put an exclamation point, not a question mark.
I know, put a, put a, a bottle of champagne after, uh, May first.
Yeah.
Well, there'll be, there'll be one in the mail to you, Jamie.
Last question.
It'll be, it'll be thoroughly shaken.
Yes.
The question, Jamie.
Uh, yes.
Have there been any changes, um, in the plans for Eagle View? That have been administratively approved as opposed to us?
No. The last thing that came before you was the merger of the two, well, now, hold on a minute, hold on a minute, Phil. There was a color change to the facade.
Oh, I missed that.
Oh.
There was a color change to the facade.
Before design review.
No, it did not go before design review.
Should it? Was, was it like mauve to like brown or something or?
White to gray.
It was a slight, it was slight shade, a shade, it was a shade change.
White to gray, huh?
The last, what I would call substantial change was the merger of two units, which the commission saw as a special permit modification.
I just, I'd be careful on the slippery slope on that one as to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, you know, I, I sent a note to Will about that, the share of the D R C and, um, I didn't hear, so.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I just think, you know. Based on what we've just exhaustively discussed and will be discussing for the next month. They, they're, they've not distinguished themselves by sticking to the letter of the law. They, they're, they're to be suspect.
Monitor.
All right, hi.
Uh, I don't understand much.
Early night, hey?
Uh, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you, Jerneek, for getting our registrations through.
Oh, yeah, appreciate that.
Yes, thank you so much, yeah, thank you, Jenny, as you're welcome.
Uh, all right, thank you, Phil, second.
Second.
Hi, Frank got it.
Thank you, Frank, all right, we go to Frank. Good job, Frank. Oliver.
Hi.
Good night, everyone.
Hey, Scott.
Yes.
Hey, I just want to know, I checked the site plan on one application you were talking about, there is sidewalks, but there is no crosswalk in that entrance.
There was a, not at the entrance, but like in the middle of the.
In the middle, not in the middle.
Frank was like, wait a minute, let me go back and check.
I got, I got some reflective paint for you, Frank, huh?
Oh, we're gonna put a flashing sign up now, too.
Oh, no, no, flashing in, in, in the sidewalk.
Building up. Yeah. It's so much littler, it's.